All right, we'll bring this immediately to order. First item on the agenda is the reading and approval of the minutes from the July 22nd, 2025 Record Council Meeting. May I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments about the minutes? Very well, all those in favor say aye. If there's anyone opposed, say nay. All right, minutes are approved, thank you, council. Next up is the public comments. Again, you have three minutes, please try to keep it underneath that. Jessica will let us know when you've got 30 seconds left, if you're running closer to three minutes. With that, I'll bring up our first speaker, Mary West. And Anthony, if there's somebody listening by computer, okay, after Mary goes, I'll announce that.
If you can do it before I have to speak.
Okay, if you are listening by phone or computer, by phone, if you would like to speak, dial star three to raise your hand. If you're connected by computer, just click on the hand icon on your participants' panel, and we will recognize you after the last speaker here. All right, Mary West.
Good evening, everyone. And once again, I am here, and I also would like to thank our city council for trying to do better for the city of Beckley. They had a full plate when they had taken over this job, and we need to work together instead of fighting amongst each other. Let's work together and do things the right way. And I would like to thank the Board of Public Works for coming down and removing all those trees on a property over by me and helping out in that area. And also, the people that works for the Board of Public Works does such a good job. They have to pick up all the trash up and down these streets that people are throwing out just to be thrown. So if we all can come together publicly and administratively and work together, this would be a better city to live in. Let's stop trying to take each other out and just put it together and be right for each other, because we need to be together now. We getting ready to go through some people that you don't know what you're getting ready to go through, and you're gonna have to have your act together. And it's gonna take all of us to help each other. So let's just work together. And I want to thank all of you all for the jobs you do. It's not easy. It's just like being motherhood for every one of you. You got to raise all us children out here. So let's get it together and do it right. Work together, and I want to thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, everybody be blessed.
Okay, Adam Justice?
I'm Adam Justice. I'm with the Beckley Police Department. I just want to take a few moments here this evening to talk about the upcoming softball game that we're gonna be having with the Beckley Fire Department. We haven't had it for, I think, at least one or two years now, so we're gonna bring it back this year. Myself and Mark Brasky from the Fire Department and Mayor have had some meetings about it. The game's gonna be on August 23rd, be at 3:00 up at Epling Stadium. And the way we're gonna do it, it's gonna be all for charity, and the winning team, we've got two charities picked. The Fire Department has picked WVU Children's Medicine, and the Police Department has picked Just for Kids, located here in Beckley. And so how we're gonna do it is, we've been, myself and Brasky have been going throughout the city to get donations from businesses here in the area, and so the winning team will get 75% of the proceeds to their charity, losing team will get 25% to their charity. So both charities will be getting something. Be $5 admission for the game for adults, kids 12 and under will get in for free, and we're gonna have games in between each inning for the kids. We've got Chick-fil-A Cows gonna be there for a couple of things, but we're gonna have game for the kids, and each kid that participates will get a prize. We've gotten, the businesses here in the area have been very supportive of this, we have gotten a lot of different, like gift cards and different prizes from restaurants and businesses. I won't disclose it right now, but we did get one really, really, really good donation that we may end up raffling off overall, so we'll kind of talk about that later, I guess. But again, game for the kids, be plenty of gift cards to be given out. There is an event earlier in that day, and where's it at, Jill? Was it at New River Park? So New River Park, there'll be an event earlier that day from noon to, from 11 to 2:00, and so our game will be at 3:00 on that same day. So hopefully, we can get some of the folks from that event to just kind of migrate over to Epling Stadium and to be a part of that game. So we're just one of the, just bring that out for everybody. We've got some news interviews scheduled, we post some more on social media as the game gets closer. Just want to take a few moments. Mayor, anything else that I missed, or did I hit all the highlights?
I think the biggest thing, too, is we're gonna try to make it as a fun, community event and make it as much fun for the kids and enjoyable for them. It's almost time to go back to school, so we're just trying to put this together. It's gonna be more than the softball game, although I do, I am looking forward to that. I know Cody, Frank, myself, and Kip are gonna be umpires at it. Hopefully, we get several hundred people out there.
Wait a minute.
We do take bribes. But anyway, it's gonna be a lot of fun, it's basically good for the kids. Now, the charities all the money, we put in 7525 just to put a little competitive edge to it, and we promise to make it a fun, community event for all the kids, so come on out.
Yes, thank you.
Looking forward to it. Thank you, good job.
Thanks for the heads up, Mayor.
Christina Basden?
Okay, that's good, I'll be there. I'll be there.
Okay, Christina Basden, what you have just been served is a letter of intent. This is to the city of Beckley, Mayor Ryan Neal, City Manager Philip Gerald, City Attorney William Foul III, City Council members Natalie Koontz, Nancy Dingus, Frank Williams, Brian Kip Buchanan, Janine Bullock, Sherry Hunter, and Michael Cody Reedy. This has been delivered to the Beckley City Hall today on August 5th of 2025. This letter of intent is to file a complaint in Raleigh County Circuit Court concerning violations of the West Virginia Open Meetings Act and city procedure to all named parties. I, Christina Basden, hereby provide formal notice of my intent to file a civil complaint in the Raleigh County Circuit Court against the city of Beckley and the above-named public officials for repeated and deliberate violations of the West Virginia Opens Meeting Act, West Virginia Code 69A, and municipal procedural law. Since January 2025, the city of Beckley has included the following statement in every publicly posted city council meeting agenda. I quote, "Due to the Open Meetings Act, the city council members and the mayor will not respond to the speaker. Comments, concerns, and issues will be recorded and reviewed. This statement is not found anywhere within the Opens Meeting Act, nor is it supported by any legal precedent. By attributing a non-existent limitation to state law, the city has misled the public regarding their rights and responsibilities under this act. This practice misrepresents state law and suppresses legitimate civic participation, a fundamental right in any open democracy. Additionally, the city council has altered the order of its public meeting agenda specifically by moving public comment to the beginning of meetings without proper public notice or adherence to procedural law as outlined in the city's own municipal code as codified in MuniCode. Those agenda changes were made without formal vote, public hearing, or parent, transparent justification violating both process and public trust. Despite bringing these issues to the council's attention, on multiple occasions, I have received no response or acknowledgement from city officials. These actions and the refusal to correct them represent not just administrative failure, but a willful attempt to suppress citizen voice and civic engagement. The elected and appointed officials responsible for upholding the law and protecting the public's rights, including the mayor, city manager, city attorney, and all city members listed above, have collectively failed to do so. These actions constitute grounds for legal redress, and as such, I am notifying all parties that I will be filing a formal complaint in Raleigh County Circuit Court. The goal of this action is to ensure that the city of Beckley ceases the use of false and misleading language concerning the Opens Meeting Act.
All right, Christina, time's up.
Proper procedures for setting and altering meeting agendas are restored and followed, and the rights of residents to engage in open participatory government are fully respected and protected. This letter serves as a final opportunity for the city to correct these violations voluntarily before a judicial proceeding commenced. Thank you.
It's very unfortunate. Tom Mosley, you want to go next?
How is everyone? I wanted to start out and thank you, everyone. I took about a month and a half off for my health and peace of mind and reflect on some things, and got a lot of calls, got a lot of texts. Thank you for your concern, it was nice that I was missed. The other thing, while I was sitting on the beach reflecting a little bit, I did a lot of thinking. You know, a lot with what Ms. West said, we have to come together on a lot of issues, and not a lot's getting done, not a lot's getting changed, and we have seven members of council here that have to come together as one body. You know, I know everyone, including myself, we have our own opinions, we get dog-minded about certain things, but I would like to see this council come together and make better progress, put personal agendas aside and move forward. Trust me, it's a lot more peaceful, and it'll make you feel a lot better in the end.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. All right, next up, Chris Crookshanks?
Hey, I just wanted to come up and say that I appreciate that the vape shop ordinance is now on the agenda.
Yep.
I appreciate that you all are taking this seriously. I think we underestimate how much of an impact vape shops and establishments like it can have on our community, our economic prosperity, potential for education for our kids, how it affects our firefighters, EMTs, police officers, our nonprofits, everybody. So I appreciate you taking this seriously, and as we work through that process, just think about that. I appreciate you and your hard work on it.
Thank you very much. Anthony, do we have anybody else?
Nobody, raise your hand.
All right, very good. Then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, brief comments from council members and city manager. Same thing, try to keep it to about 30 minutes. Janine, you go ahead and start us off.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make an announcement about Friday, August 8th, the West Virginia NAACP will be having a banquet, they're actually having their convention here, and Friday the 8th, we'll be at Hard of God Ministries, and Bishop Fred T. Sims is the keynote speaker for the event, the banquet on Friday evening. And I just wanted to thank you all for the resolution, Attorney Foul, and Mr. Gerald, and Reverend Leach is here on tonight about what you all are gonna be doing for him on Rice Street. He just celebrated an anniversary there at the church of 43 years, and we just want to congratulate you for your 43 years there on the corner of Rice Street. So, and I see you have some of your members here, did you all want to stand? They're from, some of them are from St. Paul. Thank you all.
Say it again, Janine, the name of the church?
From St. Paul Baptist Temple. And Deborah Carter, it's good to see you back. She has been a little ill, but we're glad to see you. And I believe that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Janine. Kip?
Just a couple things, thanks to Jill. Thank you to Jill for the wonderful car show you put on, and Mr. Bowlen, your crew was there, thank you for all that, it was a free show for everybody, thank you, you're welcome. I volunteered and helped Jill, and anytime you need help, just reach out to me, Jill. Another thing is, I know we're workshopped out, and I can't believe I'm mentioning this, after golf season and the slow season, I'd like for us to have a workshop on Black Night. Leslie can give us all the numbers, what we see at Black Night, what the golf numbers were, what the pro shop did, what the meals are, how many meals they're serving out there. Because, like I said, Tamrac and everything else, they're subsidized, Tamrac and Convention Center, and we gotta look at, we just need to look at some real numbers, so that's all.
Okay, Frank?
Yeah, good afternoon. Mr. Donnie, I sure do appreciate you, sir. When I pulled up in my driveway now, I don't see this big burnt building in front of my face. It's gone, the hedges got cut. We still got some things, some areas over in the East Park area need to be done, but, you know, I appreciate it, because, you know, you just, you got a tough job. Only thing, I do get you some more manpower, all woman power, which I want to come first, but I do appreciate it, that's all.
Nancy?
I just want to thank all departments, they all do a great job. Thank you.
Natalie?
First, I want to thank Mr. Gerald and Chief Bailey for going out at Friday's in the park last week and talking to some of our street people, vagrants, however you refer, because I understand that you all found the people that were actually technically homeless and began steps to help them find shelter, and I don't know of another mayor or police chief who has taken that initiative to do that, and I thank you both. And I'm just gonna say this, I take what I do seriously, I work with my constituents, I'm out in my ward, and what we do here is important. But about 10 seconds before Ryan banged the goggle, the gavel, I got a message from a longtime friend, and my boy next door, the first young man that I ever had a crush on, he and I became neighbors again as adults, his wife and I are close, she's been texting me for two weeks because he's been in critical condition, and we're like family, and he passed away just a few minutes ago. So what I ask you is, fall in love with your life. You know, all of this stuff, all of this government stuff is important, and the people that work here are important, but we've got somebody else sitting up right now, is up here right now, who had a loss, too. Don't forget that you're sitting next to people, and the main thing that counts in this whole life is people. That's all I have to say.
Just kind of touch on what she said, I didn't even know what I was gonna say, like 10 seconds ago, you said that, but, you know, we talked about it at the last city council meeting, I'm new, I've been here one year, I try to listen to everybody, I try to do what people want and what people want to see done in Beckley. It is hard when you've got so many people involved, and so many people think different things, but we are human. I mean, I said it a couple of meetings ago, you, we, almost everybody out there has one of our cell phone numbers, you can reach us for anything, we're all, I can tell you, everybody up here on city council has huge hearts, and I think the thing that bothers me is, you know, I went and listened to the governor speak last week and talked about some of the issues that we face, not as a city, but as a state, because our city's right in the middle of it. You know, stuff like, we're supposedly one of the most depressing, people are the most oppressed in our state than anywhere else, we're the, we have the worst workforce participation, we really got the worst obesity rate, we got all these real, that I think are real problems, and it's sometimes you get attacked with little things, and I'm not gonna say they're petty, but it's like, man, you're missing the bigger picture. We need to be focusing on the real issues that is affecting our community, so, anyway, just to hop on what she said.
And we went to Asher Mindout, too, that was great today.
We did.
Thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. I have a challenge for people that live in wards 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. I would like to identify a champion, well, you all have a champion in each one of your council people up here, your elected champions, but I would love to be able to bring together a community garden in each ward and have people work that community garden together. We have identified food insecurities, and I think that sometimes when you toil in the soil, it's very rejuvenating and helpful to your community. I'd like to be able to see if we could establish something in the coming days. Speaking of food, Friday, it's the second Friday of every month, and it's Mount Air Food Bank's Veterans Table. It's for veterans only, the truck arrives from Braxton County at 9:00 a.m., distribution's from 10 until 11:30, and they give our veterans a really nice amount of food. Volunteers are welcome to come and help us at Epling Stadium. We always want to thank the Eplings for allowing us to be on that parking lot. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sherry. Cody?
Thank you, everybody else discovered what I had to say, so I'm good.
Very good. Mr. Gerald?
I'm sorry. First, I'd like to thank my staff, the Chief of Police, Mr. Wheels, Captain Wheels from the Fire Department, Leslie Baker, Jill, Donnie, Mike, John. Like to thank you, all of you, for the hard work that you put in. Some people do not see it, but I do, every day. So I just want to thank you and be upfront with you, and thank you for your services, okay? Next, Public Works is starting back to paving streets, just to give you a little bit of what we've been doing. Barbara Park will be completed this week totally, so if you would like Ms. Bullock, you can go down and look at it, and I think it looks very nice.
Thank you.
Okay? We're starting the earwood parking lot this week, so we got the final drawings for that. For the council members that wasn't involved in picking the parking lot, I have the drawings, there's some vegetation in it, and some landscaping, and, but I do have the drawings in my office, if you want to stop by, if you wasn't involved in that decision, you're more than welcome. Neville Street's gonna be the next one I start working on. Hopefully, we can get those two empty lots, and we can pursue that. There is ordinances that my staff is working on now, one is a vacant building, another one's a vacant property ordinance. Of course, we're still on the LRA, there were some legal questions that had to be asked about membership. If they was involved with the committee, could they actually, you know, some are actually developers, so they wanted to know whether they could bid on the property, too. So there was legal questions involved with the LRA, so that's where that's at right now. And as Ms. Koontz said, myself and Chief Bailey went out to meet some housing groups, and there is available housing for the homeless. Ms. Baker, matter of fact, she knew a person that was homeless this week, and they had a house, rented form and everything within five days. So there is available housing for the homeless, I just want to let you know that, and if somebody's homeless, like myself and the chief, we went through the city of Beckley, walking the streets, and we talked to several, and most of them had homes, and they lived in apartments over on Prince Street, and they, that's their lifestyle. And that's all I got to say. If there's anything I can do for you, let me know.
All right. There's nothing on old business, we'll move directly to new business, and the next item is the first reading of ordinance, the city of Beckley vape smoke shop location and operating requirements. For more on this, I'll turn it over to Mr. Foul.
Thank you, sir, Mayor, I appreciate that. Tonight is the first reading of the much anticipated ordinance to regulate the location of the vape and smoke shops in the city of Beckley. Basically, what this ordinance does is it limits these facilities, or these businesses to locate in B2 districts, and in doing so, they cannot be within 1,500 feet of a number of businesses, or schools, or colleges. They can't be located within 1,500 feet of a public park or recreational facility, they can't be in, within 1,500 feet of a public library, or a church, mosque, temple, or synagogue, or any other place of worship. They cannot be located within that distance of a federal, state, county, or municipal office building, or in a residence, they cannot be located within basically that same distance of a R1 residential section. So it is an opportunity to regulate these, it has to go through code enforcement. If somebody does want to operate one of these in a facility within the city limits of Beckley, they have to go to the code office and ask, and apply for a conditional use, which will be then determined by the Beckley Zoning Appeals Office, or Commission, and so it's going to be regulated, it hasn't been in the past, but it will be starting once this is adopted, assuming council will want to adopt it. Tonight is first reading, it passed tonight on first reading, we will have second reading in a public hearing at a special meeting next Tuesday, which would be the 12th of August at 5:30 p.m. here at Council Chambers. I'll read the ordinance by title and then ask the mayor to put it on the floor for a vote. It's titled Section 15-38, that's of the city code, the city of Beckley vape smoke shop location and operating requirement ordinance. So Mayor, if you could ask for a motion and second, and have a vote on that.
Thank you, Mr. Foul. With that, may I have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented?
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions for Mr. Foul on this, from council?
Just do it. Just do it.
All right, very good. All those in favor of approval, say aye. If there's anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, it's approved, okay, thank you very much, council. Next item is the reading of an ordinance to revert a 2.204 acre portion of parcel 14, tax map 50, on Eisenhower Drive to the DHHR, and again, I'll turn it over to Mr. Foul for more on this one.
Thank you, sir. Yes, this is the first reading of an ordinance, and it passed tonight, this will also be on the agenda for the second reading at the special council meeting next Tuesday night, August 12th. What this ordinance does is it authorizes the city of Beckley to convey back to the West Virginia Department of Health and Human Resources, a 2.204 acre tract of real estate. It's a portion of parcel 14, tax map 50, it's located on Eisenhower Drive, it was formerly the homeless shelter, there's no longer funding from the state for the homeless shelter there, so that has not been in use really starting the 1st of July, and the deed that conveyed this property to the city of Beckley back in 2023, I believe it was July 28, 2023 was the date of that deed, did require that if this property was no longer being used for a public purpose, it was to be reverted back to the state, so that is what this ordinance does, it's in compliance with the deed that deeded the property to the city. And this will authorize the city manager and the recorder treasurer to sign the deed that I believe is attached as an exhibit to this ordinance, and I will read this by title tonight, and then, as it stated, it passed on first reading tonight, second reading will occur one week from tonight at 5:30 p.m. This ordinance is titled, "An Ordinance Authorizing City of Beckley to Convey to the West Virginia Department of Health and Human Resources, a 2.204 acre tract of real estate, being a portion of parcel 14, tax map 50, State Board of Controls, deed book 99, page 275, located on Eisenhower Drive in Beckley District, Raleigh County, West Virginia." Mayor?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Foul. May I have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Foul on this, from council?
Do we need to correct, it's no longer DHHR, is that right?
Well, it's gonna be deeded back to the entity that deeded it to us, and it will be to whatever their official name is, because, because they were, as stated in their deed, it was West Virginia Department of Health and Human Resources, the agency of the state of West Virginia, a successor and interest to the State Board of Controls of West Virginia, so whatever the entity is that they require on the deed is the name that will be on the deed, but this is basically conveying it back to the state agency.
Thank you, Mr. Foul.
The building, the building.
Yes, ma'am.
Has there been any conversations with DHHR about what they might do with that building?
No, none whatsoever.
None whatsoever? Something positive. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of approval, say aye. If there's anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, so motion is carried, thank you again, council. Next up is the first reading of an ordinance regarding leased property at 100 Washington Street. Mr. Foul, you want to talk more about that?
Yes, this is a matter that's been discussed, I believe, at previous council meetings. Yes, this is a matter that's been discussed, I believe, at previous council meetings. It is the East Park Community Center and this is a lease that has been prepared. If council adopts this ordinance, it would authorize the city to enter into this lease of property located at 100 Washington Street. And this is a lease that would be to the West Virginia, Southern West Virginia Multicultural Museum and Community Center, Inc., a West Virginia corporation, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. And what this does is it leases for two years to this nonprofit organization, this property and building. And the nonprofit organization will be responsible for the cost of insurance for this property. The City of Beckley will be responsible for the utilities. And the property's being leased for a dollar, a dollar a month, I believe it is. And this will require to be passed on first reading. If it's to advance to second reading, and if passed on second reading, the city will be authorized to enter into this lease. So I'll turn that back over to you, Mayor.
With that, may I have a motion to approve the ordinance as presented?
So moved.
Second. Any questions? Anybody having questions about this with Mr. File, about the lease?
Just be required, Mr. Gerald, for the insurance?
Yes.
Or Mr. File?
Yes, they will be required to have insurance, produce a certificate of insurance, naming the City of Beckley as an additional insurer.
So I have a question. The individuals that are in the basement of the center now, are they supposed to have their own insurance?
That will be really up to the multicultural museum and community center to make that decision.
Okay.
Because they, and I assume they may ask for that.
All right.
But that would be up to them, who is the less see of this property.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay, all those in favor of approval, say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, motion carried. Thank you, council. Next up is resolution to approve the fiscal year 2025 annual action plan. At this time, I might turn it over to Mr. Gerald.
Yes. What this is, is our annual FY 2025 annual action plan. And it has to be approved tonight to be submitted to HUD for our community development block grant program. And what that is, is every year we get a community grant and we're part of a entitlement city. So if we do not approve this and submit it to the HUD for approval, then we lose our title as an entitlement city. So this is very important. It's approved tonight and submitted to HUD. The funding is in the amount of $289,846. And that's to be utilized for the general administration and street improvements, which will be paving or sidewalks. So that's what this is. Okay, and it's seventy some pages and I think it was emailed to you all last week for review. So I didn't want to put it in your folders, so we emailed it, sorry.
It's a lot of scroll here. Appreciate it.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second. Is there any questions for Mr. Gerald on this? Very well, all those in favor, say aye. If anyone opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to honorarily name a street after Reverend Walter Leach. May I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on this? Does anybody want to say anything about it?
Congratulations.
Well deserved.
Congratulations.
Did Attorney File want to read some of the resolution?
If you'd like me to.
Okay.
More than happy to.
Why not?
Okay, yes, this is a resolution to Pastor Walter M. Leach, Sr. Whereas Pastor Walter M. Leach, Sr. has served for the past forty-six years as a residing pastor of St. Paul Baptist Temple, located on Rice Street, Beckley, West Virginia, and is recognized throughout his city as a gifted preacher and teacher. And whereas Pastor Leach puts great effort into his street ministry, meeting people where they are, praying with them and for them, providing them with food and necessities while welcoming them to his church. And whereas, in addition to his caring ministry, Pastor Leach has worked tirelessly for the betterment of the city of Beckley where he was raised and educated, having served as chairman of the board of the YMCA of Southern West Virginia, a member of the Regional Planning and Development Council of West Virginia, president of Mountain State Baptist Convention, past president of the local NAACP, youth football coach for the East Beckley Wildcats, and was recently given the Outstanding Leadership Award by the Piney Oaks Community 2025. And whereas Pastor Leach has been a positive influence in the lives of thousands of youth and adults through his ministry and volunteer work throughout Southern West Virginia. And whereas, the City of Beckley desires to honor Pastor Leach for his many contributions to this city by honorarily naming Rice Street the Pastor Walter M. Leach Street. Therefore, be it hereby resolved by the common council of the City of Beckley, that Rice Street be given the honorary name of Pastor Walter M. Leach Street in recognition of Pastor Leach's contributions to the City of Beckley and the positive influence he has had on thousands of people, young and old, in this area. Be it further resolved, that signings be placed on Rice Street, signifying that Rice Street has been given the honorary title of Pastor Walter M. Leach Street. This resolution is duly adopted tonight by the common council of the City of Beckley.
Does anybody from council have any other questions or comments before we vote?
Just thanks to Mrs. Robison and some of the members there at St. Paul. This has been a blessing for you because you have been there a lot of years, dealing with a lot of different people, and we just thank God for you. And Robin Harbison was also just a big help in making this come about. Many blessings to you and your family.
I'd like to make comment.
May I say something? Oh, I'm sorry.
I've passed Leach for a long time and Rice Street was one of the most dangerous street in Beckley years ago. And that's a fact. And he has cleaned up not only Rice Street, but also have helped the city of Beckley and Walter Leach, bring honor to you and your misses.
I met Walter Leach a long time ago. I believe he played for Post 70 when I first met him. That was in our teen years. But I don't know of another person that's more deserving than this than Walter Leach. And I just want to thank you. And yeah, I've always said that he was more for him. So thank you.
Very good.
And there is always, always something to celebrate and be grateful for.
Okay, with that, we'll take a vote. All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, motion's carried.
We ask if he has something to say.
Congratulations.
Can we ask him if he has something to say?
Would you, yeah, sure. Would you replace that?
To each one of you, we just want to thank you for honoring me with naming Rice Street, Reverend Walter Leach, Pastor Walter Leach Street. I'm so grateful and thankful after hearing someone has passed. We ask that you would tonight pray for them, not only for those, all of those that are in mourning. Pray for the city of Beckley. I heard comments saying that we need to come together and do things, and that's the only way we're going to get it done. Together we stand, divided we will certainly fall. I also saw adversity here in this place, but adversity sometime motivates us to go forward.
That's right.
And so we are grateful unto the Lord. Thank each of you again, and I appreciate it. And we will honor that street and keep it clean.
Thank you.
Thank you, Walter.
All right, next is receipt of bids for the paving of Mercer Street, Nixon Drive, Dorcas Avenue. I will take my time and open these up. I'll get my glasses, I'm sure I will need it for these small crowds. So are these individual, is it individual or others confusion last time? Mr. File, are they individual or is all streets combined or is it individual?
I think they're combined.
I believe they're combined all this time.
Holy cow.
All right, airwood. Want to make sure.
It's your nightly reading.
Are they just made copies?
Three copies, yeah.
All right, very good. Um...
Looks like y'all are doing nightly reading right there. We just get one.
Well, tell me if you see a company name and...
That was the big package. Should have been Triple A Paving on that one.
Um... Triple A Paving, okay. All right, we got some. All right, so again, this bid come in from Triple A Paving. For the Mercer Street, it looks like it's $198,875. For Nixon Drive, it's $10,450. And for Dorcas Avenue, it would come in at $91,750.
What was Dorcas again?
$91,750.
It's Bowlin.
And those were the only three, correct?
Dorcas is Bowlin.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that should be it, right? Mr. Bond. Okay, I'll pass this on to council at large. So we just got two bids from two different companies. Okay. All right, the next bid is from West Virginia Paving. I can't, let me... For Mercer Street, they have a total of $188,385 for Nixon Street or Nixon?
Nixon.
Okay, Nixon Street. And he's seeing one for...
He's on the next page.
And then for Dorcas Avenue, it looks like it's $65,640 for a total of $257,200. Sheriff, you make sure I read that right.
Yeah, $257,200.
Okay. All right. So that's the only two bids. Again, those bids will be reviewed by the council at large, city manager and harbor heads, so we'll move on to the next. Okay, next item is notice of application for West Virginia ABC license at 108 Galleria Plaza. At this point, I'll turn it over to Captain Morgan for more information on it.
Yeah. Kumho Culture Inspiration Incorporated. Incorporated owner, doing business as Kumho Japan, 108 Galleria Plaza. Map 72, parcel 24, has filed a notice of intent to apply to operate a private club, private wine restaurant, or tavern at this location in the B2 general district. This location, 108 Galleria Plaza, and the intended use, private club, private wine restaurant, or tavern, is a permitted use in this B2 zone. The location is not in an area designated by common council for the use of community development block grant funds. I think it was change of name application.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. Next is notice of application for West Virginia license at 101 North Eisenhower Drive. Go ahead.
Karen Bishop, applicant, GDSH Distributors LLC, doing business as BFS Foods Incorporated, number 103, 101 North Eisenhower Drive, map 14, parcel 112, has filed a notice of intent to apply to operate a Class B licensed establishment at this location in the B1 neighborhood, Highway Business District. This location, 101 North Eisenhower Drive, and the intended use, Class B licensed establishment, is a permitted use in the B1 zone. The location is not in an area designated by common council for the use of community development block grant funds.
Thank you very much. Next up is executive session, but before I ask for a motion to go to executive session, I know not everybody sticks around, but just want to remind everybody that tomorrow there will be a workshop here at Council Chambers to discuss the welcome center and the open with funds that the city's had for some time now. And that is four o'clock tomorrow. With that, may I have a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Wait a second. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, council.
I seen that when I shared it, when I showed it to the audience.
It does, it does. Yeah, no, no, I mean everything. Transcribe. Yeah, that's all I did on this full, uh, local district. I can't write, I don't like to write like that. I put a reminder of my vote.
Now, see, I've gotta have a list that I can look at, something that I can eventually migrate tasks. So I'll go through all my different ones, and if I've already completed it all, I'll probably...
I'd love to refer like to, I'll look at this, that's why I think, look, perfectly simple, just my past, my calendar. But it's not one hundred percent really rich to use that calendar. Because it goes by what phone I look at.
Right.
I get that all the time.
Yeah. Yeah, see, I can't, I can't work on that now. When all my stuff is scattered across calendar, whatever else, it's really not bad. If I don't have it right there, it's like a line, so I have to have something.
Yeah. I think I've found myself, my email specifically, my college and references are a lot. It's like a...
I was thinking about that the other day. Right after I started, I got my, my shitty book, and it was... It can sell, but like if everyone was open browsers, uh, and I just...
Yeah.
And then just something to take a grand amount of.
Oh, oh, this is... Well, without the ability to have such, like, third form of math. Yes, when they're not yet, well, that's our problem. Whatever he told me is now, no. He's having a good night, but right somewhere. Oh, man, in front of those everything, that is so nice. Look at that, like, look at them all, right? And then, matter of seconds, like I said. Yeah, and that's a nice part of life. I'd love to take those right away, and it's...
Where's the...
This writes a little slower, but this is more...
See straight motors.
It's not a planned city. But I'm not sure, it's a problem is when I was... South Charleston.
And it's like, yeah, just drop over the PDFs. The functionality is, I think, is a little outplays. The little white, interesting. I don't know, it's not, it doesn't work.
I would forget every time.
Well, I tell you, when you came in hard walking this way, I was like, oh, let me get... That's it, that's what my mindset immediately.
You were right here, put yourself on the website, and it was like, replace that with this.
That's alright. I was just talking about it earlier, it's a one and a half thing. Oh, man, I'm honest with guys.
See, I, I mean, I was like, I'm like, I'm suddenly, I'm like, I wouldn't know.
Together for two years.
That's who I am. They weathered, it's hard for you to hold it.
That wasn't that bad, was it?
Maybe try to get just twenty minutes too long.
You're right, you're absolutely right. I went to the wrong table.
I thought your dad would stay longer than take you out to dinner. I'm gonna say what kind of dad that is.
Four o'clock tomorrow.
Four o'clock.
I've already read it. Okay, bye. Microphone? Text them to...
Don't act like that. Don't be a shit guy. You're gonna act like that to a lot of people.
It doesn't hurt my feelings. I've learned to just move on.
I'm gonna have four pairs because we couldn't decide what strength they needed. Yeah. I personally think they should wear these on... I think the strength is...
Alright, may I have a motion to exit Executive Session, come back into regular session?
So moved.
May I have a second? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Thank you, Council. Uh, just like always when we go to Executive Session, there was no votes taken or anything like that, so with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?